...the tentative budget for the fiscal year June 1, 2018 to May 31, 2019. County stands for the place.
Let's please listen to the Duane United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we pull the board?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mott?
Yes.
Now, return to our treasure. If you can go over the budget and we'll entertain questions at that point.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you need me to stand or am I okay? Can everyone hear me?
I believe you're fine because you're going to have to reference too much paperwork.
Right.
Everybody here, I'm okay?
Why don't I just take the microphone?
Thank you. Good idea.
I'm glad you could hear that. Thank you. Okay, for those, if you don't have a budget, there are budgets available on the table up here that you can take, which is the line by line. The 2018-19 budget, as submitted, reflects the following: the tax levy that remains unchanged, the zero increase in taxes. The tax cap law, by the way, allows up to 1.2% this year. This budget reflects the utilization of about $4.5 million in fund balance, reserves, and reserves. $3 million in fund balance and the balance of that in reserves, about $1.5 million. The tax rate, which is what will appear on your tax bill, shows a slight increase of 0.45%, which is the result of declining assessment. Last year's assessment was 74.5 million; this year it's 74.2, in round figures. The contractual increases that are included in this budget for the CSEA are 2% and for the PDA, 2.5%. One of the issues that we've been grappling with and we've been citing again this year is the constitutional tax limit. The village's constitutional tax limit is targeted to be 95%, which is down slightly from the 96.3% last year. I'll tell you, the words that the controller used, we've been noticed by the OSC and their correspondence of January 31st, and we've been cautioned as follows: "Based on our experience, you're currently considered to be in a high-risk zone. The current proximity of your village to its tax limit warrants close attention by all involved in the budget process." To me, this is a very serious matter for the village and something that we will be looking at even more closely over the next few months. The mayors and trustees were involved with this budget. Certainly more needs to be done in terms of revenue growth and maybe some expense reduction. But the key drivers, you know, for this year, we had some savings in our self-insurance fund, about $1.5 million. We also had a little, a slight increase, I believe, in our debt service, which is the result of us paying down part of our, part of a bond anticipation note that we have outstanding. Most departments came in relatively flat. There were a few that have gone up. You know, the police department has a sizable increase on the salary line, just so everybody understands. That's all contractual as well. We have a rather new group of officers, I want to say there are about 40 or so, let me just give you a second, I'll get that number for you, that are on the steps. And by that means, you know, their step increases are climbing. They start, they start their salaries at $54,000, $54 and change, and step 10 would put them up at $129.9. Okay, so as they go through that 10-year period, those numbers will skew that 2.5% increase that you would expect to see on that line. That equates to about $700,000 in terms of the salary adjustment for all the new officers. There are about 60 officers currently on these steps. The termination benefits line is also a sizable line. Again, a large portion of that is being offset with fund balance and reserves, so has to not affect or adversely affect the tax rate. Aside from that, I think it'd probably be a good idea if people had, if any of the residents or the trustees had any other questions regarding this budget, I'd be happy to entertain them at this point.
I appreciate that. We all had a chance to be with you, so again, thank you. This is getting the residents a chance to speak. The one thing I wanted to mention, which I'm uncomfortable with, but nevertheless is a fact, is a couple of years ago, I did write to the state legislators. The point of the letter was that this budget, if it passes, is our budget. This budget, if it fails, is still our budget. And that seemed a contradiction to me, but I didn't get any action out of all of you as regards to that, so we are still in that position. Of course, this is the tentative budget, but nonetheless, pass or fail, we have that in place. And then this is the year, this is the deal that we have been dealt. Thank you. And trustees?
I have a couple of questions. First, I have a statement. Do you think next year when we're doing this project, we can even do a PowerPoint presentation or something so that everyone can be able to see? Maybe we'll sit out there and be able to...
Yeah, by all means, I can, I can put together a couple of slides that would encapsulate what this budget is.
Yeah, so that everyone can see it at the same time?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to hold off on this one.
I do, I do have one other comment that I could make at this point, if I may. Including in this budget will be use of the tax stabilization reserve. Okay, there is a, I believe it's about $690,000 in that reserve. That will require before considering this budget, a vote of the board. Okay, and it requires a supermajority to adopt usage of that reserve prior to going into and adopting or ratifying the budget.
Well, we're on the topic, perhaps you could elaborate on the impact that they have on Moody's, for example.
Well, you know, that particular reserve, I mean, they, Moody's and S&amp;P, they always, when they're looking at any business and a village is really not much different, they're looking for reserves that could tide you over should something happen, should something go wrong, to keep, to keep stability, should you have some unforeseen conditions. So they look for that. The employee approved liability reserve, we use that primarily to try and offset some of the termination benefits that get put in for, some are annual, some are once, you know, don't have to call that often, but we do use those reserves to try and offset where we can, so as not to undue the raise taxes.
But the benefit of the residence, are Moody's rating?
Primarily the Moody's rating will also, potentially S&amp;P is our rating agency right now.
What does the standard force say? What is our rating?
We're, we're an A minus right now. And that rating basically translates into a low cost of borrowing when we do go to the market. Trustees, anyone have any questions to ask?
I've got a couple of questions. By the way, thank you. I thought the budget was done very, very well. Can you just explain the difference between the modified budget column and the approved budget from the prior year?
You're looking at the...
Looking at the detailed budget for the 18-19 budget and page 17.
The modified, the modified...
Page 17, in perspective.
The modified budget, that particular column, will reflect any budget transfers or budget amendments that may have happened approved by this board during the year. So in some cases, you'll see that we have a $1 million contingency number in this budget. From time to time, most times, we end up drawing that contingency down, and it moves off of the contingency line into the particular department that requires it. That's where the modified comes in.
So there was a resolution by the board to increase the total budget by over $1 million during the course of...
Well, it's in, it's just a reshift of those funds, taking it from the 1990 line and moving it over. So if you would, if you were to go back to...
So is that like a budget transfer?
That's exactly what it is. A budget transfer or a budget amendment.
Okay.
Well, but if you look at the modified, the modified total for 2017-18 was, in the general fund, was $84,786. The adopted budget for 2017-2018 was $81,133,962, so that's an increase of $2.8 million over the course of the year, not necessarily into fund transfer. That's an increase in the actual budget.
Another, that's a good point. Another part of that could have been and was a transfer or appropriating fund balance. Okay, back in October, I believe it was, there was a resolution came before the board to approve repaving of streets. To be able to do that and make sure the funds are in place, we appropriated fund balance for that purpose. So that would have shown through this, through this modified budget process.
So there was a resolution before the board previously to move those funds out and increase the budget by relatively close to $3 million at that point, correct?
It was less, it was less than that.
2.8.
But the same thing.
2.8, 2.8 million. So, and is those numbers, that change in the reserves reflected in the reserve balances that you provided as of 3/26?
That would change in the fund, in the fund balance.
In the actual fund balances. And the appropriate reserve balances that are in the current budget for 18 to 19 are not reflected in the, in the balances, the reserve balances as of March of 2018, because they haven't been appropriated yet or...
Well, they're not, they're not. Well, they're in the front as a revenue, but they're not...
They haven't moved, they haven't moved from one part to another.
No, but technically, technically, they're already in the budget because all of the appropriations by department assume or that you are to appropriate that fund balance on the revenue side.
Correct.
So that it balances out.
So utilizing the appropriations that would be moved, it's roughly $4.5 million for 2018-2019, factoring that into the reserve balances that you, that you gave as of March, almost April 1, 2018, have you revisited the calculation as to how much is actually releaseable based on the fact that you officially appropriated a relatively large chunk of that over into the budget?
That 2.8 million that was released, okay, to cover the road reconstruction is something that we intend on bonding and replacing that back to the fund balance at a later date. Okay, so the answer to your question is yes. When we, when I did this, I considered that.
Okay, so just, just really quickly, and this is my math, not yours, so I'm not trying to put the words in your mouth, but, but the, the budget in total, just in the general fund, of 82.8 million, of which for a source, from a source perspective, includes $4.5 million of reserves.
Includes...
So, if you're on page 1.
Let me just get the numbers if I can. Yeah, $4.5 million, a $3 million in fund balance, and 1.5 in reserves.
Right, so a total of 4.5.
Correct.
So if those reserves were not used, would the village have been able to, to meet its appropriations, meet its expenditures, had it not been for the release of those reserves?
Um, no.
Can you explain why that is?
Yes, because there are certain assumptions in here. For example, we'll use the, use the termination benefits as a perfect example. With the police department, okay, we have close to $2 million of termination benefits on that line. There are, I think, 41 officers who are eligible to retire. Okay, that number could be, let me just see if I have it.
I don't think you need it. Let me ask it different. Just differently. Statutorily, could the village, would the village have been able to meet its appropriations had it not been for the release of those reserves?
Nope.
Can you explain to the people why that is?
I'm trying to do that.
Okay, so...
Right, because there are certain, there are certain appropriations that are grossed up in this budget, okay, and being released by reserves, as I alluded to earlier, to keep the taxes flat, as flat as possible. There are release of reserves and release of fund balance that if not released, we would not be able to, to balance.
Correct, so what...
But it's not, it's not $4.5 million.
So, well, that's 4.5 per...
That's 4.5 per year.
Per year, for the numbers that we have in front of us, right? So, so just to, just to be clear, in the general fund, we would have $82.8 million worth of required budgetary appropriations. What would be, would fall, our revenues, both estimated and from real estate taxes, would fall short had it not been for the appropriations of reserves?
That's correct.
Even if, would they, would the, under my calculations, and you can maybe follow the concept but not the numbers, if you would, so that would have increased, that would have required not just 62.7 million of real estate taxes, but an additional $4.5 million, so $67.2 million of real estate taxes in order to balance the budget?
No.
Okay.
If, first of all, we would never put in an additional $4.5 million, okay, of real estate taxes for the purpose I mentioned before, that we have certain termination benefits, okay, that are grossed up in this budget, okay, and those reserves, the revenues are offsetting those expenses. So if everything was netted down, trustee, okay, we would have had to increase the tax line, but certainly not by 4.5 million.
In your estimate, what would you have taken?
On the police, on the police line alone, I could probably say that we've got about $1.2 million of reserve covering something that I don't know if it's going to happen. Okay, so it's really, I know that, I know that I've got 41 officers that are eligible to retire. I know that that number, if I put it all in at one shot, it's over $4 million, okay, just on that alone, and I will provide for 35, 34% of it as part of this budget, and then offset that, okay, largely with, with fund balance and reserve.
So that's a million, too. So let's say we take it down to 66 million.
Go ahead.
We take it down to 66 million, plus the exclusions allowed under the tax cap, and we've got estimated exclusions...
What do you mean the tax?
In the tax, in the tax levy cap, right? There's, there's the amount that you can, it's your tax levy, your total amount that, you know, per your valuation, then they reduce it for exemptions or exclusions of property that, right? So that's, that's backing out the $9 million, call it 200,000 of exclusions that are on, around the books in any calculation that you provide. That takes us to $56.8 million, which is above the constitutional tax limit of 56.3. So even if we, if we didn't use the reserves, even the buffed-up reserves, the village would not have had, and I'm not trying to put words, it's a question, the village would not have the appropriate amount of room under the tax cap levy to meet its expenses.
That's a true statement, but it should also be noted for this board that while we're bringing a zero in, okay, on the, on the tax levy, okay, we had the ability to levy on an additional $1.6 million in taxes this year. Not necessary, so that, so we're bringing down the fund balance to do so.
Correct.
But to your point, yes, it would be structurally unbalanced by that amount.
And, and that because of the tax levy cap and our closeness to that cap, basically?
It's because of the constitutional tax limit, not the tax...
I'm sorry, constitutional tax.
The constitutional tax limit is problematic for us, yes.
And we are currently number one or two in the state as it relates to its closeness, and the OSC is looking for us to be, get off the watch list, if you would. We would have to be believed below 90%?
90% would be appropriate.
So my question is, what in this budget prevents this or helps to fix that issue?
Nothing. That, that issue is really driven off of assessed value.
Correct.
It's driven off assessed value, it's driven off of the assessed value, the total expense base for the budget, and it's also driven off of de-equalization rate. We don't, we don't control...
We don't control that.
De-equalization or assessment. Expenses, to a certain degree, yes, we do, but some of them are complex.
I have a few questions about the police budget.
Yes, sir.
What do we have on a lot of the police budget for 2018 and 2019?
I'm sorry.
As far as overtime? How much money do we have set aside for overtime?
2.4, I believe you said?
I think you're right, 2.4.
And how much do we owe the budget last year for police overtime?
We're looking at, right now, on an actual year-to-date, we're at 2.6.
You're going to go by 2.6?
Excuse me, no. The budget is 2.6, not 2.4, and where we are, as of the time I downloaded this, about 2.6.
So how much do we owe for the budget?
We're probably right at the budget right now. We still have a couple of months to go. So we're, we're probably going to be looking at around 3, 3.2 million in overtime.
Okay, so for this budget, how much money do you have set aside for overtime?
Well, it's not just strictly going to be overtime, because we have to look at what other savings might come through in the police department. So on termination benefits, we could add some savings, savings on cross-expect, so it's, it's not something that's set aside specifically to overtime.
Okay, so what are we doing to ensure that we don't go over the budget, or what staff have been taking to prevent the police overtime from being so high?
I'd have to ask the trustees who deal with the police department that question because they have this information and to discuss it with the chief. I mean, I can't control their overtime, I don't make the schedules.
Okay, so, but this is the budget for this year, so the chief needs to be sat down and needs to explain exactly what's going to happen in overtime, and he needs to know that overtime just can't skyrocket with no reason.
That's correct. I don't know what, what the reasons are for the, for the overtime, what initiatives they're running, special task forces they have running, I don't know.
How much did the, the police department have of the budget?
I'm sorry?
How much the police department have of the budget? How much percentage of the budget is...
36.
I thought it was more.
It's not many of your favorites. Yeah, that's, and that's...
36.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not getting the, the number, whatever number was mentioned, because everybody was writing this in truth.
Public safety is what, about 36% you said? And we have that by chart? That's not just...
36.6% would be the number you want.
That's not, it's not just the police department. Okay, I would have to calculate that number for you.
But in the, in the, in the budget for 2018-2019, we've got 2.6, but we've run over $3 million from '15 to '16, '16 to '17, and we're trending towards over $3 million, maybe 3.2 for '17-18 actual. So I guess to the trustee's question, what are you projecting in your projection, which is $600,000 less, sometimes $800,000 less than, than what has happened over the last couple of years? What, what is being done to drive this $2.6 million number versus the $3 million, which we've been trending over the last two, three years?
I, I can't tell you what's going to be and how they're going to get to that level. What I can tell you is historically, the police overtime ran about 15% of salaries at one point in time.
May you interject?
I think we need to get...
I should have mentioned, yeah, obviously. Overtime is high.
That's a great question.
Very much so.
Yes, I do have a couple of pages of suggestions that I've written out, still formulated, and there's some plans. A few of them need to be adopted, and so the overtime will be better. And I'll share that with the trustees when I'm finished with it. It's not an easy assignment, but I should tell the public that May 31, our associate chief and our deputy chief contracts are up, and they will not be renewed. So obviously, in the interview process, some of this that I'm working on, I'm going to want that to be part of their mantra going forward so that we can have some grip on the overtime. As to the chief, if you're thinking along those lines, he's been here 40 years, has civil service protection, and he goes when he does go, and there is no indication at this time as to when that might be. But there are some changes in the police department, as you can see, that are being anticipated, and the changes that I have in mind certainly would be incumbent on what it is that we select, and there'll be a committee and a proper call. Obviously, if the chief does go, we're limited to the results of the test given in March. Probably, would you say, trustee Johnson, October, November, when the grades come out?
At least, maybe longer.
Maybe longer. And at that point in time, with that position available, we are allowed to pick one of the top three.
Thank you.
I guess to, to this city overall, the point, I mean, this is one line item that, and I'm not hopping on the line item, I think it is worthy of discussion, but if we're budgeting 2/6, the overtime line item, if we're budgeting only 2/6, and we clearly run over 3, that's clearly lower than, significantly lower, so when you roll the whole thing up, it just exacerbates, it's troublesome because it exacerbates the issue, which is that this budget is balanced off the use of reserves, not off the use of revenues. And that's a extremely difficult position to be in, and so my question that I'm asking to everyone here, including the public, is what are we doing within this budget and what are we doing as a village to remedy that situation? And there is nothing in this budget that, that is remedying the fact that, that we do not collect enough revenues to balance our appropriations, and this is just going to be a problem that continues to happen, and reserves are there for a reason. They're a rainy day fund, which means they are, it is raining right now in the village, and we're not doing anything to fix the issue. So this budget needs to include the proper dollars for us to be planning to do things that grows the tax base and increases the revenues in the village so that the budget actually balances without using the revenues to balance, I'm sorry, the reserves to balance.
No, when it comes to the police department, particularly the overtime, it has to be down, and there is a plan that will be in place with the new chiefs that are coming in, which hopefully will guarantee just that. And there's lots of areas, I see, where the overtime is abused.
And I also feel that, you know, I'm on the police board, it used to be 1.5 million, now it's 2.6, and all I hear is crime is down, crime is down. Back then, we had crime, it was 1.5. Now crime is excellent, and we got 2.6. That doesn't make sense.
We phrase that as not excellent.
Well, that's what I hear every time we hear reports. Crime is down, crime is down. So if crime is down, overtime should be down.
I think the 2.6, back to trustee Daniel's point earlier, the 2.6 million budget is basically discussed, and it's, it's a message, it's... and it's a message, it's basically, the current run rate for overtime is not acceptable. Okay, it's outpacing where it should be and needs to be looked at.
And how long has that been going on?
It's been creeping up over the past couple of years.
Right on the budget, it says, two years. I was going, it was right in front of me.
This is a lot of cutback. We've got to cut back and hold off the raises and everything else right now. Everything's got to be cut back.
So contractual, contractual raises go forward, merit raises have to stop.
Exactly.
Again, there was a plan with the police department, and it addresses other things besides overtime, but overtime is the main point. I do have it, but I'm pretty mature to share it this time and counterdub it. This is going to be part of the discussion we have, is we follow protocol and appoint two people, or maybe one, as the assistant chief, the deputy chief.
So we have one other question that I touched on a moment ago. The fund balance, is that also being used to hold the taxes down?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what percentage of increase that we have in this budget over the last year?
This budget is flat to lack. There is no increase. Okay, so the only, the increase that you'll see on your tax bill, I believe we said is .35?
Yeah, it's like 25.
Yeah, it's just a little higher than that, trustee, .37. Okay, that .25 is on preliminary AV.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody on the board have any other questions? At this time, we'd like to open it to the public. If you state your name, your residence, and ask some questions, let's see who came to. If you would, I hope so.
Oh, there's no mic? Is the mic still there?
Evening, everyone. And happy birthday to Professor Perez.
He's 65 today. Thank you. I love you. Give it, take it.
Thank you, sir. Dan Oppenheimer, Hampshire, New York. Each year that I see this budget, there's a line item for about 40 employees, or a portion of the salaries paid for under the water department. So I've questioned that in the past. And this question is for mayor, members of the board, or treasury. Is there a regulatory reason that the water budget is always separate? And why there's a separate percentage line item for those roughly 40 positions? Is this just an administrative decision that you've made? Or is there a regulatory reason that you have to have it?
Nearly 20 years ago, the water was separated. Some say it's Floyd, whatever it was, created the budget completely, but we will address water later. As to the percentages added from the water department, the theory is that those people spend that part of the time on water or water-related issues.
I've heard that explanation in the past, but if you're receiving a salary for dozens and dozens, maybe hundreds of different items in the village, none of which are broken out separately, with the exception of the water department, at 20%, which is a very significant part of anybody's salary, I don't understand why that receives that special treatment and other things such as road repair or public safety. You might as well, you know, pay yourself an extra 20% for public safety issues. So rather than belaboring this, I would ask the board and the mayor to consider consolidating the budget back to a single comprehensive budget that includes the water department, sanitation, all of the various departments in a single comprehensive budget, and to get away from the separate 20% individual water line budget on that. Question for Mr. Clayne. The average reserve fund balance year over year, are we still staying within a reasonable percentage of that by utilizing the amount that we're using this year?
We will be bringing it down to roughly 11.1 million dollars, which is about 15% of the prior year's expenditures, and that's within policy.
So each year, in your experience over the past several years, has been 10, 11, 12 million, somewhere in that range in the reserve?
Well, we've tried to manage it to the, to the policy.
Okay, so even though you're using water this year, it's not significantly drawing down the average over the last, or you're saying? Mayor, you mentioned, or I'm sorry, Brad, you mentioned the bonding for road repair that will be coming up. Is any portion of that covered by state, county, or federal funds? Or is that 100% financed by village bond?
At this point, it's 100% village bond.
I should mention, right, Mayor Dan, roads across vital, it's a million dollars a mile. So when we realize, oh, we do 10, 12 roads, we realize, say, can we do more, which obviously we'd love to, but it's expensive to drive this budget out of control.
Absolutely. And just to confirm, you mentioned the assistant chief and the associate chief will not be renewed?
That's correct.
The chief has spoken in the past, when I had asked him about overtime versus the cost of new hire. Overtime obviously is a large expense on the budget line. When you hire one police officer, you then have, presumably, once they pass their probationary period, you have up to 20, 30 years of benefits, insurance, everything else. So I don't know how you practically measure out which one's more beneficial to the village, and which one costs more, which one costs less. It does seem that overtime versus a new hire is a little bit out of whack. At this point, I'm sure you're going to be addressing that when you
Indeed.
do the new water contract for that.
That's correct.
The lease contract.
And, and, you know, it's not like I'm keeping a secret, but it's like giving the test answers out. If I thought through my plans, I want to hear this from the candidates. I want to know what their thought process is, and how much of that is in the plan, and see if we can pick the right person.
Final point is, in the new water budget, the 6% increase, is that correct?
Yes, and that will be a second meeting that comes right after this one.
Okay. And what is the dollar amount that you project to, for the village to take in from this?
Ray, you have it handy?
Yep, I'm flipping to it right now. Water revenue? From meters, about 8.368 million.
Okay, so we're adding...
Just about 8.4. So we're adding...
Half a million.
Give or take.
So going back to my original point, we could say we have a flat budget, except we're adding another half million dollars to the...
Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Patricia McNeil, President of the City. Mr. Mayor, you said one mile of road repairs costs us a million dollars?
That's the figure I was given by DPD.
What are we using? Because, for example, Holly Avenue has been done three, two to three times in the last seven years, and right down Holly Avenue now. You have to zigzag because it's falling apart. Whatever method we use, okay, the company that we use it, it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked for very long time. We keep repaving the same roads over and over. The other roads keep getting pushed back. For example, mine, it's been on the list for the last two or three years. Crookshank, what is it, Eldridge, Angie Vine, we keep getting pushed back further and further because other roads take precedence. We're not using good business sense, but the people we're choosing.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
In that instance, you're absolutely right. The Holly Avenue is an embarrassment. Shortly after it was done, we were getting poppers. What happened is, save money, the person that did it, the company that did it, made the area much smaller than it should have been. The consequence is, we've got to do it again. Instead of saving money, it's costing us money. Holly Avenue is an example of making bad decisions.
So what are we going to do now to make sure we don't continue?
Well, Holly Avenue is on the list of one of the streets that needs to be redone, and you're right, multiple times.
Three times in 10 years?
Yeah, it has not been selected. There are approximately 12 streets still going forward.
And, Mr. Mayor, budget, if I'm correct? If I'm not, please let me know. The reserves, wasn't that the money that the prior administration, prior mayor borrowed? Didn't we borrow a lot of money to put in reserves, to have a reserve?
I don't want to, we're speaker, but I don't recall that as being a fact.
Wayne borrowed, Mr. Hall was here, Mayor Hall was here, we borrowed, God knows how many millions of dollars. And that's what he was using as substitute to balance the budget?
No, ma'am.
Okay, please correct me. What was that money for then?
Any borrowing would have been for capital equipment or roads, things of that nature. No funds were borrowed to be placed in reserve.
Okay, so then we borrowed to get this truck for recycling, and we ordered the wrong type of truck. So now we had to add another day of pickup on Wednesday, because the truck we ordered, it had two different carriers, but only had one hopper. So who's doing this? Who's doing ordering? All we get sent over to the middle school, we're not having children do it. Because if BBW is doing their job, why would that happen? So now it's costing us, because now we have an extra day of pickup for newspaper and cardboard, unless it's a holiday or a snow, then we lose that day.
The thing which he's talking about, Ray, is, you know, the means that we had in reserve, instead of us using that money, we borrowing. I think that's what she's talking about. The man didn't want to touch the money that was in reserve.
Well, you want to try to maintain a certain level of reserves for...
Right, I understand that, but I think that's what...
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
But certainly not borrowing to put it in the bank.
No, I understand what you're saying, but we didn't use the money that was in reserve.
That's correct.
Reserve money occasionally is used to keep the tax rate flat, or definitely over 2%.
So saying that, this made a lot of hiring. There's been a lot of pay raises that has affected both the folks.
Not necessarily. I think some of the pay raises that were done was to accommodate positions that we needed to fill. Instead of filling them, we would give a cycle to someone else and be able to create that. And there is hiring, and per your request the other day, I do have an example of exactly where that hiring goes and what community they come from.
Okay, but also, Mr. Mayor, we hired a lot, we kept on a lot. Our numbers are much higher than it was in the previous administration. We can't carry it. If we're constantly going over the budget, we need to make some cuts in some ways, Mr. Mayor.
We're flat.
We're flat because we're using reserve, we're using...
Please understand that some people who perhaps you might say are some that can simply replace, you can even put the approval of the board, eliminate some positions, but those who have civil service protection, even if they're changed in terms of their title, they go back to their old title, and they're still a member of the staff.
But there's a lot of appointment, Mr. Mayor.
I know exactly how many have been appointed and where they come from. If you ask me for that question, I have it sitting in front of me.
Right. You feel that there's no cuts that we need to make in this village to make it more affordable for us residents to be able to live here and enjoy a high quality of life at a low cost?
That would be correct.
Shame on you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't think there's a shame on me. You're trivializing people's jobs, and individuals who do provide a service to the community, you remain rooted.
But, Mr. Mayor, you're also putting people who live out here, you're putting their lives and their livelihood in jeopardy. You want to always balance for this half, but you don't balance for the other half. You keep going, our taxpayers' wallets, what do you care, how would you do with it? You keep spending, spending, and spending.
Well, I try not to do that. I understand the tax, the constitutional tax limit. I have to do an even better job, but I would like to point out that the rate is flat.
But we were over budget last year.
But listen, we've had one there, and double intention increases, and we don't have that.
And that's supposed to make it okay?
No, it's an example of the efforts being made, we're just to keep the budget within line.
And please, all the parthets, would you please stop putting in raises for your employees?
They've been told that.
It has not been approved.
They've been told that.
No, they've been told that as a point, because it's been done. Been told that as a point.
The chief's staff meeting might have been a couple of months ago.
Oh, so they just told that?
Well, that's when we got the letter from the state. Dramatizing that our constitutional tax limit, as Trustee Daniels pointed out, is the second worst in the state.
So our school is the second worst in the state, now our village is the second worst?
No, I didn't say the village, I said the constitutional tax limit.
Right, I'm saying, second worst in the state. We always at the bottom, but we pay the top rates. We need to change that, Mr. Mayor. We really do.
Well, that's part of the philosophy now of the tax, the increases to pay being limited to the contract that is negotiated by the union.
And that's 2%, I think the union...
It's 2%.
2% plus there, I think there's another rate.
But my dear, there are times when we can combine a job, which saves money.
And how many times have we done that in your administration?
Might be one coming up, but there's one in the past.
And since you've been sitting on the bench, how many times has that come up? Because you've been here quite some time, so has that come up previously?
It has, but I couldn't place a number on it with accuracy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just want to let you know we're watching, and we're very satisfied, and we're going to hold your seats to fire.
Please, and I need to do this here at the other meeting.
Not at the front, but I'm waiting.
Thank you.
Terry Winston, resident of Village Penn State. On page 23, under title, Village Court Cashier. Could you elaborate on that title and what your function is? And what your qualifications are?
The Village Court Cashier.
Yes.
Signed to order and tax, but the money from that purpose, and put it into the account that goes triple towards our budget.
And what are their qualifications?
Civil service exam.
Neighborhood aid.
Neighborhood aids are used to control the area, ticket cards, the parking legal, or something along those lines.
Helping the ratings.
Yes, good point, Ray.
They do, right? Neighborhood aid?
Yes, Trustee Johnson pointed out, they also help with the ratings, but they give tickets as well.
They do our tickets?
Yes, they do.
And at the top, you have cashier. What is that function? And what are the qualifications? At the top.
All right, Village Court Cashier, that's the same sponsor you got from the previous one. They work for the tax board.
Excuse me?
They work for tax board assembly.
The Village Court Cashier, and they cash in the top of the same...
The Village Court Cashier, you're asking me?
I asked about the one at the top, on page 23.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. That two is the tax board, but it's not the top, it's another person. There's more than two in there. There's several people.
So...
That's the titles that we get, and we'll limit the titles based on civil service.
All right, so when I come in here to pay my board bill, the cashier at the top would be over there, right?
That's true.
And the Village Court Cashier is when I go into the fishbowl and I have to pay a ticket?
That's true.
Or me?
If the fishbowl means this one, I'd be right.
All right. I would like to add to what the first speaker said with respect to your role and responsibility as our leader. And I'd like to say that as far as I'm concerned, it just seems like the village is on repeat to pay toll. And this practice has to stop. There's a lot of things that you're going to hit. All right?
All right, number one, you need to diligently go after those offenders that have pilots, okay? And they're violating the agreements in those pilots. All right, there's no accountability for that.
Losing.
There's no accountability for that. And second of all, you need to stop endorsing the current bad pilots, all right? I'm talking about FDR, Delon, Delon Tree Center, all right, Mazda?
Yes.
And so many others.
No, not so many.
And, and, and...
Those two.
You didn't inherit that problem because you were sitting on the village board when the predecessor was getting our pilots like it was, like it was all right, all right? So you didn't inherit that. What you inherited was the ability to put a stop to it, and you're not. And as long, as long as, as long as this continues, you're going to have issues with your budget. You know, you can no longer expect the taxpayers to come up with a shortage. And you can't say that there isn't a shortage, because there is. And I'm tired of being insulted by you or anybody else that for some reason thinks that pilots are good. They're not, none, because you haven't put a handle on it. You have the planning board, department of buildings, sitting on the fence, but yet we're paying them, all right? And then, when they want a raise, they get it. They have to be held accountable. Otherwise, we'll never be able to move forward and we'll never be able to get this village where it's supposed to be. You know, I lived here as, what my house, I invested in Hempstead. I didn't have to. And now at fifty-six, I'm still here. Why? My daughter's not here. Because not only do I care about the community, I also care about these kids. And that's what's keeping me here. And this budget will ultimately affect the three children. And if you care anything about these kids like you claim you do, then you try to get a handle on what's going on in the village and do what's right for this community. Those parking lots are given away for nothing. And then you sit back and you're giving us the runaround about it. You're in a position to put a stop to it, and you need to. No longer should you be sitting around waiting for something to happen, you need to make it happen. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Let me just respond with this. As to the parking lots, I think it's now a well-known fact that the parking lots were part of the previous administration. It was not a vote that I took as trustee during that era. My situation is uncomfortable, that's what I'm saying, but it's there. Now, there are a couple of lawsuits out, I understand that. But you must understand also that the agreement that I inherited calls for a level...
You didn't inherit it, you were with it, you were part of it.
You were on the board.
You were sitting on the board. So you need to stop, you need to stop lying to these people in this, in this, in this room.
And I'm not lying.
Because I'm not lying.
Security.
If you could just give me an opportunity to talk to you in a case. I was not part of the...
Yes, you were!
Security. Can you listen to my surprise?
When you're finished, please, we'll give it to you. I was not part of the parking lot. Many people call it the giveaway, whatever you want to call it. I was not. That was done exclusively by the mayor and Don Marty and did not impact the trustees. And you can shake your head if you want, that's the truth. And I know we had the discussion with Kennedy Park, and Bishop Hobbs came to my rescue, telling me that what Donna was saying is absolutely true. It was done by the two of them. It is not a deal that we would have gone with, but we inherited. Part of the contract calls for level of cooperation on my part. I don't want to put the village at risk, and I want you to be vulnerable for lawsuit. So if I show that I'm opposed to them, they could use that as an argument. We obviously relatively said, well, if they haven't done anything, they should leave. But time is out during a lawsuit. Lawsuits are still pending, so we can't use that argument. Now, I did support FDR. There were two hundred and fifty jobs at stake. I did think that if we didn't approve the pilot, that those two hundred and fifty jobs might exit Hempstead and end up with the old investment shop in Suffolk County. Now, there's an argument on one side or the other. That was not what the policy IDA's called. The issue that occurred with the union came after the fact. The union has appealed to the IDA to reconsider on that basis. They went to a private meeting. Can't tell you what happened. But in that private meeting, they upheld the agreement. The union obviously is going to have to go to the natural populations, labor board, to get satisfaction. But the agreement says, we don't want workers to be taken advantage of. But the IDA is not in that area. As to Mazda, apparently an unpopular call, but my call, and I'll take ownership of it. I got attracted by the fact that they were going to have a program to train individuals. Some people got stuck in the number five, but for those five people it's viable, and it will multiply. I saw technicians all along Carrow of Hempstead High School graduates having careers and jobs through the experience that they would get in this situation. I thought, and I caught that that as being something that definitely attracted me, and that's the rationale there.
Oh, did I just say... Massa County, Suffolk, and other areas?
I have a list of every employee at FDR and their address.
From FDR, though?
True.
Not from the union?
True.
And the two hundred and twenty-five are all residents of the village Hempstead?
No, they're not.
All right, so then, so then don't say two hundred and twenty-five, because see, when you say two hundred and twenty-five...
I said two hundred and fifty.
When you say two hundred, it doesn't matter, two hundred and fifty employees.
Yeah.
The people back here seem to think that he employed two hundred and fifty employees that live in the village Hempstead. And that's misleading.
I'm not sure you can speak for all the people. I hope it's clear there's two hundred and fifty employees. There is a large percentage from the village Hempstead, even larger.
Well, what is the percentage of ones in Hempstead?
I would say close to fifty percent.
Fif- what?
Fifty percent.
So you're saying that out of the two hundred and fifty is half of that?
That's what, that's fifty percent.
And, and you're lying. You're lying.
I don't, I don't... I don't understand the need to do that.
You're lying.
Well, just say you don't agree. I don't think the word...
No, it's not that I don't agree, it's on paper what the amount is, and you know, and I know.
I have it in my room. I have every person who lives there and their address. Any other questions?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Gary. I live at one oh nine Broadway in Rockville Center. I wanted a few people in this room who have been to Budle Hills for about, you know, close to twenty years. And I have all the budget books at home on Saturday, and I've checked them out. Tonight, I want to speak to two issues. One is the reserve, and the other is the pilot situation. I guess I'll start with the reserves. I wonder if the treasurer could give us a description of what the three reserves are that are listed on page twenty-one.
The appropriation of fund balance, that's an unappropriated fund balance, it's not a reserve. Okay, so it's, it's the funds that's over and above of what our fund balance policy says we should be holding. So we're releasing two point nine of that. The other two, the first is the Employee Benefits Accrued Liability Reserve, EVALR.
Could you please let me read that again, what is it?
What?
Say that again.
Employee benefits.
Employee...
Benefits Accrued Liability Reserve. And that's a reserve established under General Municipal Law six P, as in Peter. Okay, and that's really primarily used to offset some of the termination benefits that I referenced earlier this evening.
Termination benefits.
Okay, that's what, that's what we use it for. There are some other reasons why you could use it, but I just, I'd have to look them up for you.
Okay.
The, the third one is the Tax Stabilization Reserve, and that is used primarily to reduce the tax liability or the tax burden on the residents to a level that would not exceed two and a half percent. Okay, so while, while the tax cap for the village is two percent, the legislation for the, for that particular reserve, which is under six E of General Municipal Law, references two and a half. So that can be used to bring down tax liability to a...
But didn't the village put that running into that account?
Yes.
I think the original amount was two point five million.
I don't know if it was that high. Okay.
But that came from village funds. Okay. And so the first, when you say it's not really a reserve, but it is excess money.
Yes, please.
All right, I noticed on page twenty-one, where these reserves are listed, that the actual amount, or you use, if you look under the actual, the fifteen sixteen, the budget of fifteen sixteen, there's no reserve indicated there, as well as sixteen seventeen, right? And then, the actual to date of seventeen eighteen, which is this year, all these three years are zero, right? And then you're proposing to put the four point five million as going to that one, trustee Daniels. Right, now, I looked back in the IDA books, and I saw the same thing happening. In eleven, twelve, also, there was none of these reserves used. In twelve, thirteen, it's all zeros again. In fifteen, sixteen, it's all zeros again. And then I looked in each of the book, each of those books each year, to find out what was used theoretically to reduce the taxes. At the last page of the book, it has the revenues used, you know, it has taxes and different sources of revenues. And one of the source of revenues, they subtract a huge amount each year from these funds. Sometimes one of the funds, sometimes two of the funds, sometimes three of the funds. But then, when you see what the actual is all those years, it's zero. So while on the day that they proposed the budget each year, they make it look like they're reducing it with all these funds. But then, when you see the actual, they didn't use it. And that, to me, is the reason why this is done over the years to create an incredible surplus. And that this village has been carrying an incredible surplus. Sometimes it was said to be twenty million, I don't know if I got what to set that on. But I remember many years when they were saying, you know, this is being a very high surplus. A mayor, Wayne Moore, was always advertising that, and that's how he would get elected, because he had a lot of surplus. And then when you come to realize that the surplus has been accumulated by raising the taxes and then just keeping the extra money in your surplus. And then each year, maybe it look like you're going to reduce it, so you look like a good guy because you're taking so much money out of the reserves to reduce the taxes, when in fact, the budget is totally inflated and it didn't need, each of those years, it didn't need that money to reduce it, because it never used it. And that's why there's all this extra money. And it's, for some reason, and I don't think it's this rainy day reason, whatever the reason is, it doesn't make sense in a community where people are losing their homes. That's just my opinion. So I think that is something that the taxpayers need to recognize, that there's, there's something going on here. And I think it's very detrimental because it makes it look like you need all this tax dollars when you're really holding all this, this surplus. And each year, you're growing your surplus because you don't, you have overinflated taxes, overinflated budgets, okay? So that's my first comment. My second comment is on the pilots. As trustee Daniels pointed out, you need to be better ways to add revenue. Of course, one way is to not constantly play games with the surplus. Another way is to recognize that the pilots are a great part of the problem. They're taking properties of the tax laws and not getting the proper amount of money that these buildings, lots of buildings, are getting this out. Where I listed, where all these different buildings are, this is from two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And then there's a few extras added in the last, last three years as well. And the, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, all these many massive buildings recorded only two million dollars. And in, let's see, the second page here, it goes up to two point four million in the proposed budget. And I did, you know, an analysis of this. And, you know, the amount of loss, you're talking about four, five, or six million dollars a year to the village. And you're talking about ten million or more to the school district. Now, and then when you add up the numbers of years, like if you're losing four or five million in one year, in ten years, you lost fifty million. And if you lost ten million in the schools, in ten years, that's a hundred million. It's a lot of money. And these pilots have created havoc in the village of Hempstead. And I know that there are some people that think there are good pilots and bad pilots. And I challenge that because I believe if all of these pilots are bad pilots. And I did a little analysis of a comparison because trustee Daniels made a statement at the candidate night for the election that three oh three Main Street was a good pilot, but five ninety, six hundred is a bad pilot. I challenge that. I did the figures, and the figures I used were from Nissau County website on, shows you the taxes. You group up a property, it tells you how much tax was due in each one of the years from two thousand thirteen to the present. And whether, you know, they have the school tax, they have the general tax, they do not have the village tax. However, if you calculate the general tax in general, the, the village tax is between two and three times the general tax. I use just two times the general tax in my fees. And I, I got the pilot amounts from each year of the budget that I have from years and years. And so every year, I look it up and see what the actual amount was, and I put it in my Excel. And so every year I look it up and see what the actual amount was, and I put it in my Excel spreadsheet. And I did the calculations. And I found that three oh three Main Street, in all, has five years, because it didn't start till two thousand fourteen, basically. The total loss to all taxing entities was six point three million dollars in five years. And if you divide that out against the three taxing entities, the loss to the schools is about five million over five years. The loss to the village, four hundred forty-two thousand, uh, four hundred forty-two thousand to the village tax in five years. And it seems to me that what has happened here is, there's been a transfer of the loss somehow from the village, because the village loss is kind of low compared to the other pilots. But the school district is phenomenal. And of course, it hurts the people, whether it's the school district or the village, but someone's been playing the figures here, that it's so disproportionate compared to the other pilots in the past. Okay. So you see that three oh three Main Street is costing us a lot of money, costing us a huge, since I don't pay the taxes.
Ms. Gary, what were the taxes of that land prior to the building being built?
What's that?
What were the taxes at that property prior to the building being built?
Well, I know your argument, okay?
It's a question, it's a question.
Well, that's an issue right now, we're talking about the building as it is built, all right? I don't see that funny.
Well, because you're entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts.
It's a fact, it's a fact.
No, you mentioned a loss, that it's a loss to the village.
Right.
In order for it to be a loss, the taxes would have had to be reduced. But I'm asking you, was what were the taxes prior? Because if you look at the taxes prior compared to the pilot net taxes now, it's not a loss, there's a gain.
I understand that argument, okay?
It's not an argument, that's a fact.
That is a fact.
How is it a loss?
But it's not an argument.
How is it a loss?
It's a loss because that building is being subsidized by the taxpayers. They are supposed to be paying far higher taxes than they're paying. And that's why it's a loss. And don't talk around it, because they are supposed to pay full taxes. And the village residents are subsidizing your apartment. You see, because I did the arithmetic here too on this. And I found that your rent should be nine hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-six cents per month, per unit, higher than it is now, so that you could pay your fair taxes. So you are being subsidized, whether you like to hear that or not. You and everyone that lives in that building is being subsidized by the taxpayers sitting here. Because you deserve to pay full taxes. Why should you live in a luxury building and not pay your full taxes? You should. You can't afford to live there. Unless you have another eleven thousand dollars a year that you like to pay in rent. Okay, so now let's look at the situation at five ninety-six hundred Fulton.
I'm trying to remember, what was that address?
Five ninety-six hundred Fulton.
Five ninety-six hundred?
Five ninety-six hundred.
Thank you.
Here we have a total tax loss of eight million, six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. And of that, now I'm sorry, the tax loss, that's the total tax.
You're doing this for five years also?
This is, I have the six years. Because they were ineffective for only six years. All right, for six years, the tax loss is three point seven million dollars. So that's the tax loss if they were supposed to pay their full taxes, which I believe, and most people believe, that these places should pay their full taxes. And so there is more of three point seven million dollars
I'm trying to understand what she's saying.
Over six years, all right? Then, if you break it down,
It's for six years.
The way the pilot is written is kind of interesting. Like during those six years, they're paying pretty much their full taxes to the village. However, the loss is to the school district. So the school district is losing three point three million dollars. Okay?
Can I say something, Ms. Gary?
Mm-hmm.
Point of fact, I'm going to go out through three oh three Main Street. I looked at the enrollment there for the last four years. The most amount of students enrolled from Hempstead schools for that building, the most, was six. Six students. And now, I believe it's maybe four. Five ninety-six hundred Fulton, and this is something that Shelley Braise has run up several times. We have people at five ninety-six hundred Fulton, we have six students coming from one bedroom apartments in six hundred Fulton, five ninety-six hundred Fulton. So it's not just as simple as those numbers you see there.
Well, I understand what you're saying, however, in America, and in Hempstead, that's not how we determine whether how people pay taxes. In other words, a lot of homeowners that have no children, and they pay the full taxes. And a lot of areas are not assessed how many children they have.
I'm just helping you with your facts.
What's that?
Just helping you with your facts.
Well, I understand those facts, but that's not the way we determine taxation, okay? We, in general, the whole population pays for the education of all the children collectively. Yes. Right, and that's how it works. If you have no children, you're gonna still pay taxes for the kids next door to you. It doesn't matter if they live next door or in three oh three Main Street or in five ninety.
You say they're paying full taxes, but they have a pilot, right?
What?
You say they're paying full taxes for that building.
No, I'm not saying they're not paying full taxes, neither five ninety or three oh three. But three oh three is a brand new luxury building. And because it's a brand new luxury building, whether it has children or not, it's supposed to pay its full taxes. And its full taxes is far higher than a rundown building that just has a lower assessed valuation. That's the way the tax system works. So you have to be careful how you assess this stuff. The thing is, when property is taken off the tax rolls, it hurts the regular taxpayers. And this is a serious crisis, not only for what's happening now, but you have, on the books, you have a master developer agreement whereby I say, the lack of vigilance on the part of the trustees and the mayor at the time, and that includes trustee Mayor Ryan and trustee Pettis at this point, who were present during the time that that was voted upon and accepted and had an appraisal process that produced a zero figure. So you can say that that was a fair thing, but it wasn't because of the way it was handled through secrecy, through a public hearing that did not tell the people even what land was being sold by complete deception. And that, that is on the books now. It has to be ripped up, torn, and thrown in the garbage, in my opinion, because it is so detrimental to the community. Because under that agreement, they did appraisals on faults, 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 development plans. That appraisal was done on false development plans. So it's a false appraisal, and they stole your parking lots. And you ought to be angry enough to stand up and demand that they be returned. But those appraisals came with twenty year pilots for each one of those apartment buildings that were appraised to come up with that zero figure. And it was actually negative three hundred and fourteen million dollars. And then they put in the twenty pilots, brought it down to eighty-six million. And now you are stuck with that unless you fight. And I'll tell you something, it's kind of amazing to me the lack of fight that you have when people are stealing and robbing from you.
Keep in mind, when you talk about that land, water sewer availability is key. And also, again, there are two lawsuits, it's not smooth sailing. Anybody else like to comment on the mic? Thank you.
Ashley, Madison Avenue, Hempstead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I really just have a couple of questions, because I'm, I'm, I'm not at the loss right now. One is the last pilot, the last pilot that was erected. And the fact that we didn't really evaluate the pilot. We didn't look at what was going to happen once the building was erected on that land. And the way they're being taxed is safe as if it were like empty parking lot like it is now. Is there any way, your attorney's here, if we can revisit that? Listen, the people in this community can't afford to live here. And I write my mortgage check every month, but the first sixteen hundred dollars is for taxes to live here. That includes school, that includes village, that includes county, but it's sixteen hundred dollars nonetheless. Now, we can't keep, I can't afford to subsidize these businesses on the front line. We're not a city, we don't get any of the sales tax. What is the benefit? What is the benefit of a pilot of a car dealership? What is the benefit of twenty-six apartment buildings being subsidized by middle and low income families that can't keep our homes? What is the benefit? What is the benefit of us having a police department that we can't afford, that won't even do community policing? What is the benefit of us having a courthouse that's not paying any taxes? All of these office buildings down here? And we can't, the people won't even eat lunch here because it's unsafe. What is the benefit? It's too much, and we need responsible leadership on this bench because we can't handle it anymore, we just can't do it. And so I just want to know, what are we doing to try and fix some of it? We can't keep taking on these pilots. That laundry over there, I don't care if there's a hundred people that have jobs that live in Hempstead. What difference does it make if we all lose our homes?
That's all they concerned about.
We can't do it anymore. We can't do it, trustees and mayor, we can't do it. We can't afford it. So I'm sitting here, I'm listening to all this, the generational blatant attack on the black and brown people in this community, because that's who owns the homes here. We have to do something. We have to do something. So when Ms. Gary comes with her facts, some we want to challenge, but most of them, we have to admit. She's right. So what do we do about it? How do we do it? And how does this community come together so that my children can stay here when I'm gone?
Hi, village residents.
How does that happen?
Hi, village residents. Where's the law? How do we do it? Village residents first.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let you know, for all these comments that are being made by people who haven't identified themselves, I can't take them down.
They have to be at the mic to be able to be part of your event.
Patricia McNeil Cookshank said, "Mr. Mayor, we pay all the taxes and you continue to hire people that don't live in Hempstead. Some don't even live in Nassau County, some don't even live in the state of New York. So since we must pay these taxes in order to stay here, you need to hire us first, put Hempstead first."
Can I comment on that?
Of course you may.
Thank you. Not counting people who are appointed to boards, not counting people who are elected officials, not counting seasonal employees. During the administration of this board, we hired forty-one Hempstead people. There were two people not from Hempstead hired off the CSA list, which we couldn't find in Hempstead personally. There were thirteen police officers hired off the CSA list, of which one was from Hempstead, regrettably, only one. We hired a commissioner of CDA, which was the choice of a committee. We hired a deputy village attorney after an interview. And we hired a librarian trainee who followed the civil service law of being in a master's program at a recognized college on assignment. That's the total number. So if you take a look at it, you realize, eliminating the CSA, which we have no control, we're talking about forty-one people who have been picked out of forty-four.
Mr. Mayor, frankly, I'm looking at two people, almost four hundred thousand dollars a year, and they do not reside in Hempstead.
You have to listen to my preface, people have been hired.
We're talking about appointed, appointed people make more money than civil service, for starters. And you have two people here that's been appointed, and their salaries come over four hundred thousand dollars a year. And one is only here part-time, let's be honest.
No, that's not true.
Yes, it is, yes, it is. Deborah works for the village where she resides, yes, Deborah. I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking to, I'm not speaking to you, I'm not speaking to you, Deborah. I'm speaking to the mayor. Deborah, you have us here every day, please be quiet. It's my turn, Deborah, please. Deborah, I don't care to hear anything you have to say, because it's nothing for the village residents.
You're talking to me and I understand.
Thank you.
Now, I should also preface, not the appointees that are carried over, you're right, these are new people. So I did do some good in explaining not seasonal, not elected officials.
These are people make over fifty thousand dollars a year, don't let, let's cut through the chase. Your people even lower it.
Let me just say.
You want the high hanging fruit, not the low hanging fruit.
Well, I'm just giving you the numbers.
I understand, but with four hundred thousand dollars right here, and the guy from Florida, a hundred seventy or whatever he makes, I mean, it's just really crazy, don't it?
That's not accurate.
Well, whatever he makes, he doesn't even, see, when he filed his taxes after the last two years, Don, it wasn't in the state of New York.
Well, I don't know about his taxes, to be honest with you, but he is a part-time, and the amount of money he manages.
And we have no one in Incorporated Village of Hempstead. See, you teach people to disrespect us. Because when you hire people from outside the village, you say, "We don't have qualified people within Village Hempstead." So they come in here with the attitude that, "I'm more superior than the village residents because you guys aren't smart enough to get these positions. I had to come from outside." So you disrespect us, and then you teach others to continue to disrespect us. And that's when we have this little go-go girl here now, totally disrespecting us.
I understand.
So, yes, it is, yes, it is. Because I know how to come in, I know to come in to her village, and she makes, she has a good time.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I can't take down both things at the same time. I understand what you have to say is important, and whatever you want.
And we're paying you, so please, I understand.
No, I understand, but I can't take your testimony if you're a little horrible or sweet or, no, please is one thing. If you want to respect the record and you want to be on the record, I'm not going to stop until you.
Oh, please, we're asking you to be quiet, don't ask me.
Well, I'm real, I can ask everyone.
No, you're not, you're pointing, get your finger out of my face. Get your finger out of my face. Get your finger out of my face. Get your finger out of my face.
Continue, please.
When I go, when I attend her village meetings, she gets paid from there. They, they, the one thing they rave about all the time, whenever there's a rest, she's there within the hour. You're gonna tell me her village only arrests people after four P M? I don't think so. You call down here, you have to speak to her, she's out in the field. Yes, they do, Deborah, I attend your meetings and you see me there. Because they tried to get rid of you, but it didn't work. But she makes, whenever they have an arrest, she has to be there to process the arrest, and she's there. So how is she servicing two villages at the same time, two different paychecks? How is that done?
I would argue that it's the same time.
So what is it? Is it after four o'clock? Every time she's there, excuse me, Deborah, excuse me, Deborah, man just said only one can speak at a time.
She's here during the day. She does what the evening time and ham and milk is her concern. It doesn't interrupt the service to this village, where she, Deborah, watches the clock, she's always available, and she does a good job.
That's the same thing they say for her out there, she's always available, she's always there. So is it possible for one person to service? So, is it possible for one person to service two villages at the same time? No, Deborah, you have nothing to say to this. I'm speaking to my mayor that I voted on. Thank you.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and another thing is, I did mention before, I hope you guys consider the senior discount. Thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, you cannot live in this village, especially the oldest pilots, and only earn thirty-seven thousand dollars a year before taxes. We cannot qualify for a discount, a senior discount, in this village with thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So, think about, we would like to stay here. We've been here for over thirty-plus years, most of us. And we would like to continue living here. We would like to be Hempstead-dated also. But we need to, we need a discount. We need a discount on our end, not just for everyone else.
I'm taking it.
Thank you.
If anybody else would like to address the board? Yes.
Lyndell Way, Hempstead resident. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a, well, first let me say, I don't disagree with all the previous speakers about the inordinate burden that has been placed on taxpayers subsidizing businesses and offsetting those taxes that they're not paying to us. The net effect is that the homeowners are really at risk of losing their homes, and I'm one of them. But what I want to ask about, because I'm not an expert on budgets, and I want to make sure that what we're indicating here is not some kind of inflated trick to make it look like we're going to have more revenue than we actually do. So, I'd like to get some clarity on the revenue page. I think it's number fifteen. And it has, it has to do with some pilots that are listed. One is item 108102, and the other is 108103. It's called Pilot How A U and Pilot. Oh, excuse me, wait a minute.
Page fifty?
Yeah. It's 108106, I'm sorry. 108106 and 108105. Okay. What I'm not understanding is, in the modifying budget of 2017-18, there was a significant amount for both of those. Then we get to 2017-18 actual, and it's zero. But now we're going back up to significant amounts for the proposed budget of 2018 and 19. So, I want to understand, did we not collect any money from these two?
Not yet.
What do you mean, not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Then what's the actual timeframe for?
We're in the process of trying to collect from the Hempstead Housing Authority now. Okay, we sent, we sent letters over with what is due.
Now, when you say trying, why, why is there a problem if someone knows that that's the amount of taxes that they're expected to pay?
Well, we're sending, we sent the letter over to the director, and the director is changing over at this point. So, I'm waiting to find out who the director is and following up with them.
So, you're saying that an individual is, you're saying that because an individual is not in place, we can't collect taxes from an entity, an institution? I'm not understanding that.
Martin, correct me. That's exactly right. I was trying to deal with the director on it because I don't, I don't know who else to deal with over there, except the director.
What about the other one? Pilot Howas. What is that?
I'm sorry, which one now?
That's 108106.
That's the housing authority.
Both of them are the housing authority?
That one, that one for sure. The one up above, I would honestly have to go look it up to be sure.
The 108106 is a housing authority?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what is the Pilot H O U A S?
Again, the one up on the one or two.
No, the 108105.
The housing authority.
So, both of those are housing authorities?
Both are housing, but I would need to go back to the, to the actual document to give you that answer. But that second one is the housing authority.
So, you're saying as long as there's not an individual in place, you will not be able to collect taxes?
No, we'll collect it. We'll certainly correct it, collect it, and we will approve for it if we don't have it by year end. But we will collect it.
Okay.
Maybe I could just mention something quickly because the housing authority, host Mary Olson, who was the previous director, left fairly quickly, taken the job by, as I understand it. I am forbidden, according to HUD regulations, to replace people on the board when the birthday arrives. Consequently, of the board, of which there are two tenant representatives voted by the tenants, and there are five people. Two of them I appointed, James T. McKnight and Nicholas Monther. The others were appointed by previous administrations, and they include Cornelius Watson, Nicholas Padoma, and Max Rodriguez. That's the board. That board, that board, not this one. That board determines who the chairperson is and the deputy chairperson. They then interview and select the director. I don't have the power that most people would assume at 260 Clinton. It is by HUD regulations incumbent on their board to do all of that. Right now, Rita Luiz is the acting director and the person we need to approach for the money that is owed. So, they are in the process of interviewing. I believe their first series of interviews is Saturday, and it'll be their choices to who it is to be the next director.
All right. There's another one down here where we have money in the previous year, but then, in the previous modified budget, but none. Let me see what's on there. What is this A1025?
What page?
Same page, fifteen.
That would be, sorry, taxes. Those are previous tax, I believe it's the interest portion on previously, previous taxes.
Okay. So, that's still pending also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And last question, about these two items towards the bottom, 108127 and 108128. One is the LLC?
Right.
It was from 2015 all the way through to the actual 2017-18, there's nothing, and then all of a sudden, we get this amount.
They're new.
So, this is the first time.
Yes, ma'am.
And then last question, Hofstra, I'm assuming that's Hofstra University?
Yes, ma'am.
Their pilot agreed amount is forty thousand dollars for that entire institution?
It's technically, it's not really a pilot. It's more of a donation that they make.
So, you're saying that under normal circumstances, they wouldn't be required to pay taxes?
That's correct.
Because they're a, aren't they for-profit?
Yes.
Yes.
They are, they are part of the tax rule now.
How is the relevant tax rule if they're for-profit university?
Everybody's on the.
Did they take Yale to court to make Yale pay their fair share?
It's a fair question. And you take, you hate Connecticut.
That's right.
Really, Yale University that takes care of that city. And at Hofstra, we provide water with five points, and return that city, and we get it probably clearly.
I'm sorry, sir. It's probably.
We've been fighting that for years, and I don't know why we haven't.
Take it to court.
And how many, how many, how many years are we, is this going to be going on with Hofstra? Like forever?
They won't, likely the university will be here a long time.
So, they see themselves as donate, giving us a donation?
Celeste's record, it's a word I know that was used, but not for Celeste's voice. It's just, it really is not a pilot per se, even though it's still on that page. But it can be negotiated. It needs to be negotiated. Now, there are some in-kind contributions from Hofstra. You know, but use of facilities occasionally, opportunity for the kids to attend camps and games. There's also something Thursday night that was for our, the scholarship money is raised for Hempstead village residents to attend the school. So, it is a little more by-bye, but nevertheless, that's your is love.
Okay. Let me just say this. I think that if there's any possibility of renegotiating with them in order to at least get more in-kind services and benefits from them, I think it would be wise to do that. Because, you know, you do, like people have said up here previously, you treat, you teach people how to treat you by what you're willing to put up with. And I think that there's a lot of commercial entities and for-profit entities in this village that have either it's been communicated by our leadership, or they've gotten away with so much that they don't believe that we deserve to be treated any better.
That's right.
And I think that.
Thank you. Was there anybody else? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to the chairman.
I'll take the vote.
Please.
The move was why?
Me.
Second was why?
Me.
Okay. I'm sorry, who moved?
It was Pettis who moved.
All right.
Remember, I was second.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Pettis?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Rantrow?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes. And we have another meeting for four minutes, that's all. And then we'll go on to the tenant budget hearing this year as to.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor trustees, the water rate is a six percent increase over the prior year, and that's primarily driven on volume. We've had a decline in water usage. Okay, while the expenses really haven't changed, they've gone up a little bit. But primarily, the six percent is volume-driven on water. There is a sizable sum in there, about six hundred thousand dollars, that covers one of the capital expenses that Kennedy Park, the test wells, as well as offsetting that with fund amounts from the water farm. So, that is neutral. There's no impact to the rate on that. But essentially, it's a six percent increase in water.
And can you just add, this raise, was the first one in?
Three years.
First one, three years. Thank you.
How much per person? Well, remember what they used.
Depending on what they used, but I did, I did take a look at three different scenarios. And it looks to me that the water, the water bill will go up anywhere from twenty-three dollars to thirty-six dollars per year. That's, that's two dollars to three dollars per month.
Okay. The trustees, would you ask any questions you, you sort of this time?
So, you say included in that new rate is compensation for the test wells, or is that also included in the?
It's in there on the expense side, but it comes out on the revenue side from fund balance. We're going to be bonding for it, provided those wells are successful.
Well, I've got a problem with test wells at Kennedy Park. You know, unless there's some way that someone can prove me otherwise. Drilling at Kennedy Park, to me, is not, you know, we need to explore other options for the wells, the underground wells, than potentially losing part of Kennedy Park for it. You have all that land by the high school. We've got other places where we can put water wells. So, I think we should really explore that before we just fold that in, and that's the first place that we look.
Well, then, if I can bring you up to date on this one, because you shared with me, so here we go. The Kennedy Park wells, if they are done, will be done by the firehouse on the Jerusalem Avenue side, not interfere with the park as we see it. And there are other places that are also looked at. Lincoln, which certainly would bring up the same argument. Hempstead High School near the handball court. And of course, several other sites that were dismissed.
When you say the firehouse, ma'am, you mean on the back of the firehouse or in the?
Yeah, on the back of the firehouse.
Or within that mess.
You know, I had you go to Jerusalem Avenue and say the firehouse. It would be behind that, and it would be with the law requiring such a, you know, circumference. But the fact is that the park, as we now know it, will not change in appearance. The twenty-five acres that we have, all of the land and activities that the kids enjoy, the building, will not be impacted. It would be out in that corner.
The picnic area, the back of the?
Picnic area will be a little bit south of what we're looking at. And we have, we have an opportunity, and now with you and Gordy, you'll probably see it clearly. We'll have an opportunity to see exactly where they're going to put it. And take a look. They're all on the sites. I mean, Lincoln bears the same argument.
Lincoln's small.
Yeah, right.
But what about, but what about the handball? Why aren't we drilling the test wells at some of these other locations?
That's a possibility, and we have not yet moved any of it out. And you and the deputy mayor, we're all on the water committee, and your input will be important. So, those are the possibilities. There are other sites that they've looked at. But these are the ones, and they would be able to explain to you.
You got a lot of property at the water plant, why can't you present it?
Well, the water plant situation has wells there, and it can't go down very deep because they have piping, et cetera, at the Rodney Park area. So, we are somewhat limited. We do have a concern because we need to make sure we have water in other areas of the community just in case there's a need to transfer water, we're not able to do so. So, obviously, we have to be concerned. And we have to be concerned about something else. For years, we've been talking about needing new wells. Little over a decade, it has come to that point. We have to be judged by the following question. Do we have enough water for the hottest day possible and the biggest fire possible? And right now, that answer scares me. So, we have to come up with some kind of a solution. And the water situation is something we all need to keep an eye on, and we all need to work. You two have challenged with that responsibility.
Trustee Daniels, just to let you know, this will not interfere with Kennedy Park at all. You know where the garages is?
Yes.
At Kennedy Park? So, it will be between the garage and the firehouse, which is not being used by anyone right now. It's just a possibility.
No, I, I, I think we should explore all options today, you know, but I think with Kennedy Park, the assumption that's being made is that Kennedy Park will look like that forever. And I, I personally think that Kennedy Park needs a ton of investment, including that building and all areas around it. So, just because the layout works for it today, I don't know if that's the proper layout tomorrow or the day after that. But I think we should explore everything.
Okay, I agree with that, trustee. And we have, we have a need, but we need grants to do it because the taxes would just go off the roof. Kennedy Park should be double subsidized. But let me talk a little bit about grants. The deputy speaker, Harper Early Hooper, has provided us a grant for a skate park. She's also provided us with a grant to enhance the kitchen so it can be used by seniors and others. Senator Kempman has given us enough money on the southernmost part of the park, where presently, there's a ninety-foot baseball field that is not used by Hempstead residents.
No, it's not.
An additional field, which will be multiple use, obviously football, soccer, lacrosse. There would be artificial targets, again, from Kempman. No lights. The light expense is not covered in the grant. And there are some houses there too, we'd have to account and get their permission as well. So, we do have at least three of those things that will be enhanced in Kennedy Park. But I would love to see the size of Kennedy Park doubled indoor. But of course, again, grant money is necessary. Okay.
Where is the skate park?
Yeah, they have the.
Right. I apologize.
So, do you remember where the, she asked where the skate park is. Do you remember where the old, well, the skating park was? It's still there. It's a circular area.
By the handball.
It's near the gardens. It's not the park where they play handball. It's on the northernmost part of the park.
Okay.
And it's probably maybe a hundred and fifty feet from the building. Just going to go on that.
I can show you where it's going if you'd like.
Well, Mr. Mayor, why do we have to develop that land? Why can't, as far as the skating, okay, but I'm saying for the other park, where they're going to play soccer and baseball, we have no area. And Hempstead is public transportation community. Where can we have an area that we can just go and relax? The kids can go run and play on grass.
The piece of property that we're talking about, it now is complete, and remains looking like we had a skateboard, which no longer is used for years. We are taking away a football soccer field there. There's a tremendous need for it. We have constant use of all of our facilities, so that will be done. The park in the back, where you have your opportunity to rest, relax, cook, picnics, et cetera, remains.
But you just said that's going to be moved.
No.
I thought you said the picnic area is going to be moved.
I thought you said the picnic area is going to be moved slightly, no?
No, I'd say, no, it would be from the garage, as Deputy Mayor Renfro pointed out, down to the fence, right behind the, the firehouse. A bus cruise, man.
We can't, maybe Riley Park, because Riley Park isn't used as heavily as Kennedy Park is used. Can we put it there?
Well, it's a done deal, so the discussion is-
I mean, I'm talking about the water, the well, the water.
It's not a done deal.
Huh?
It's not a done deal, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, but can't, but-
Oh, I heard you talking about the-
No, the skateboard, no, no, no. No, I understand the skate. But you said, but Riley Park is not used as, well, as much as Kennedy Park is.
It is not.
So maybe we can put it in Riley Park. You know, more so over there versus Kennedy Park. Because Kennedy Park has a lot of activity, you have a lot of building, like, you have the fire department, you have the skateboard, you have the picnic area, you're going to have the football, soccer, and baseball there. Plus, you have the building with the, you know, all the facility, all the sports activities inside. Everything is crammed in one spot. We have no place to park now when we go to Kennedy Park.
One of the problems that we have, or maybe it's a good thing, I mean, it's the whole argument, nobody goes there anymore because it's too crowded. I just finished my line, I got the point. Nevertheless, here we go. Kennedy Park is the one that's most asked for.
That's right.
Next would be Lincoln Park, and that's because they have lights. We have enhanced Campbell Park, and they have a beautiful indoor facility that is underutilized. We also have a guidance advancement at Riley, will allow the PAL to be able to use that as their home base. We're expecting that type of activity, along with the other special makes in the evening, to enhance the excitement there. It needs to be more children-friendly. And Rochelle, we're looking into Living with the Bay, which is coming into Hempstead. And this, to make a long story short, is that one possibility of funding to make that area.
What is Living with the Bay?
Well, this expression is used that requires water to be moved. And some of the water that they want to move includes a spot in Hempstead. But for us to accept it, we want something in return, and there is the argument.
And putting in its wells, will it help my 260 from flooding all the time?
No, the wells are strictly for water, and will not enhance the, that problem. That, that's still an issue, even though it's not as dramatic as before, it's still an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you could give us your name again?
McNeil, M.C.N.E.I.L.L.
And your person?
Patricia.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else would like to, yes? Got any more questions upon?
My name is Terry Winston, I live in Incorporated Hempstead.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your name again, a little slower.
Terry Winston, I live in Incorporated Hempstead. What exactly are you doing in Kennedy Park now in the back?
Oh, okay, in the back? Actually, we've made a deal with the person who's developing Front Street and Jerusalem. They left a store there, items there. In return, they have paved part of Hempstead High School, part of Hempstead, down by Way Street, and all of Kennedy Park. So it was a trade. And also, I should mention to you, I did hear with interest the comments that were made, that they didn't see people that looked like you working there. I have called the director, we have talked, and we have another meeting on Wednesday. And I understand, according to them, there are five minorities now that are employed.
They do. They're black people.
Because, um-
They paid well, black people.
If I remember correctly, that, that roadway, the driveway?
Yes.
Adjacent to the fire department?
Yes.
Was something that people used to get to the parking that was on the side, so now you can't?
No, that's not true. That area is for employees only, that's a back entrance. The public uses the front entrance on Grand Street, 335.
Well, how, how do you get, how do the employees get to that section?
They have a driveway that goes from there to the back of Kennedy Park and allows for employee parking.
Yeah, but you can't get there now.
No, you can get there.
The last time I was at it.
I, I just, I just wanted to, there was a, a voter meeting. Go right through the back park, it's not, it's uninterrupted.
The gates are open?
The gates are open on Greenwich, right there, by the tennis courts.
No.
Yeah, but she's talking to the door. You need, you need, you need to get, you need to get. All right, let's go one at a time, he's, he's, it's not fair to him. The question I'm getting in the back, employees only, they have a little buzzer that they press and thing opens. It shuts for you.
They have a little buzzer?
A little, you, a given, a little, oh, just press it, it'll open for you, and you can.
To go in the back?
Yes, sir.
To park?
To go in the back or whatever.
Because I used to go through there, and that wasn't the case. You'd go behind, you know, right along the side of the fire department, and you would have access to the, to the parking over there, and then you would enter the, you know, Kennedy Park, the, the facility itself, from the back.
You can still do that, but in, in theory, it's an employee-only entrance.
Well, are you talking about the entrance to the back?
On Jerusalem Avenue, the firehouse. On Jerusalem Avenue, there's an entrance in the back for employees.
Well, I'm talking about the parking itself.
Well, the parking for the employees is in the back of Kennedy Park. The rest of the park is in the front area, a buddy drew a brush.
So if you're going to have a picnic there, how do you carry your stuff from the front of parking in Kennedy Park to the back? How do you carry your cool?
Right next, right next to CVS. Right next to CVS is a driveway.
Yeah, there is.
And you take that driveway to the-
That's a better answer.
Right, it's good.